Those who support our bill, and you say "aah",
Aah!
Those against it, they are silent. It's part of our tradition to sound this, that our traditional fathers should be given a defined role in the constitution of Federal Republic of Nigeria. Congratulations to our royal father, and one by a speaker as well, who could not against you during the over-long public hearing in the Senate, who still invite you to come and defend your position. Thank you. So now, we can go to this number here. So let's go to part of our debate that has to do with local government reforms. Local government reforms. It is a very nominative argument in every political space in Nigeria today, that the local government should be recognized as a third tier of government. So, may I call on our lead consultant, Prof., to read out the bill? Thank you.
First, give the chairman, uh, this is the bill, Local Government Autonomy Bill, Bill Number SB471, consolidated. A bill for an act to alter provisions of the Constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria to establish local government councils as a tier of government and guarantee their democratic existence, tender and coordinated matters. This would involve amendment of Section 4, Section 5, Section 7, that will deal with legislative powers, executive powers, and local government systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Prof. Any presentation on this, either for or against, these areas are why the speakers to speak, because actually we want to have uh, local government autonomy as proposed, we need a cooperation of the State House of Assembele. So, may I invite the speaker of Igbo State House of Assembele to tell us the position of the house on this matter? That after a voice speaker will also corroborate, because I don't know their stand is going to be decided. They can sit on their seats, they will bring my microphone. You are on your seat, they will bring my microphone. Thank you. Give me my microphone.
Right now, my speaker, the African President. This is Mr. President, my honourable sir. His name is Mr. President of the National Assembly in Madrati, the State of Federal Republic of Nigeria. Thank you very much. Um, our local government autonomy looks at the state office and it indicates finish the work needed and on that, we accept this. We need a conference of speakers to define the issue. Who's our speaker?
Uh, this is Mr. President, who is the president of the government of Nigeria. My, yes, my colleague, I said, I don't want to give me just one face. To that extent, because there are certain areas in that local government of Nigeria that needs for now, any questions? Yes, nobody will make an attempt to stop anybody that's free of him. Thank you. Sections are reinforcements and backs for the local government. I want to take a very big competition salary in Madrati, because I'm excited to share with you. Local government authority, it is truly related as maybe what you want cannot fairly be debated on this matter during the campaign and in this time, because of the experience we have experienced, we have some time, where one local government will be paying salaries according to the questions from the chairman, and another local government will not be paying salaries. So, uh, one of them doesn't have a product, where was the allocation cost? You miss the fact that the local government, and you must see it again on the other allocation cost. And at will, they have dropped the treasure, their cash, their account at, at will, and used many of local government workers that does to, to, these are practical things that have happened. There, here of the strategic groups haven't experienced this, to stop some of these things. Like I said, it is not a wrong a nothing that local government should have that 100% autonomy. I only mention teachers, the plight of teachers. Okay, so we are hearing that you, as teachers, man, that teachers in our region will be supporting our strike, and I know you may not be at a place to stay in the problem of their salaries, because salaries are, are directly attached to local government allocations. And if you give any free hand to local government and destroy those who change, these salaries are not valid. So also, the position of public health uh, that is also, and even primary health that is also there. So when you remove private teachers and students from the school, and you talk about, um, uh, the health, the health that you talk about, that is the primary health that is also attached there, even part of the government is attached there. And when you just give allocations to uh, without stringent, you, uh, additions to that, that is turned out there. Because all these experiences were what generated the creation of U-Bed. U-Bed, and these are things that wanted to bring back into existence, that to enable, even joint account. That was the presence, the existence of joint account. Because it was to enable them how to, to tell them that when this money comes, the private teachers will be removed, the private health will be taken care of, even the private health will be given to the chairman, whatever he makes to go and handle. That's what you talk about. So that's why I say, there you go. And then, at, at your, at your, the good artist, that this is a, a degree to grant and take the best side of the election and say, no, 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 no. What if this is that local government is controlling this class? Because you that, you that why you use agencies to create that local government is controlling U-Bed and again, uh, U-Bed at the national level? So thank you very much, President.
Thank you. Thank you for that very elaborate submission by the speaker. Can I request a voice speaker please? I'm not the last candidate. The first, fashion, which is sufficient. However, at the end of the day, we are going to have a common stand on this very topic. Yes, any other contribution? In that sense of any? Okay, give me my microphone. Mention, mention your name and your speech. Speak for my seat, speak for your seat.
I am Congress. So if you're to find it, Speaker of Madalou, who has been to the meeting. I have to give a personal preference for you to leave the topic. It is a profound humility that we, the teachers of Nigeria, and here before the highly dedicated members of our adopted national assembly publishes the ingenious and civic assignment of reviewing the 1999 constitution, the final report of Nigeria, which has provided which and what of the table to the resolution. The teachers are not against local government autonomy. But we want to talk about funding of primary education. The speaker of the national assembly can tell you that briefly, the funding of primary education. Who said that removing the quality of funding of primary education from local government government council in Nigeria should be a weapon development? It's the character of our way and it's the repositions the local government councils in Nigeria for efficient service delivered and not among national development. Local governments represented in Nigeria is often limited and far yeah, largely federal allocation coming from local parties and fees. This is very challenging for councils to consider the means they found demands of primary education across our streets. 15,000 or 20,000 places located of federal can lead to a most terrible where they have the terrible and the terrible allocation of resources. This change will help reduce the children, the prices in the point of primary education, ensuring that children, a less affluent area exists throughout as those in more prosperous locals. I had others who think everything uh, the point of this. So, then you, it's on removing the importance of funding primary education from local government to councils could lead to the most satisfied efficient and equitable educational system in Nigeria. This, this is a language supports better resource management, higher standard of quality and stronger accountability of, of which are critical for a primary in left direction and driving national development. Post-education will live appreciate the touch from left of the tenth national assembly for great, great science. Not of the government system as a third tier of the government in Nigeria, but from the foundations of Nigeria's. This recommendation will not only threaten the local government system, but will deliver in a uniform development of primary education across the cheap days of the generation. Once more, I would say, teachers in Nigeria I support the government autonomy but we believe that for most of the areas councils have shown primary education. So it's our, our, our team that's funded by State of the Republic. Thank you so much, and God bless you.
That is very good, this line of name. Is the support of local government autonomy for bettering us, what has allowed the local government to be defined? I think that is a submission and look out for this, for that, for the others. Now, 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 MC, I introduce some of my colleagues that joined us, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Very, this, yes. May I recognize Senator Kenyan Esse, we did not tell you in the hand and right. Senator Kenyan Esse is representing for the central worst distribution of water. And of course, most distinguished senator, Ossita B. Is Zunassong O. L. R. is representing equal worst distribution of water. Also, his Royal Majesty Dikwun Tugan Iweka. Esse Iweka returned as the chief chef of the state council of the General Assembly. And he is here in the world and has seen you represent himself and of all the authorities in the state. And of course, his Royal Highness and like to thank him the high representative of the state council that is to be the chairman called as the national council. He is the president. So I want to give my last words to this. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. The microphone is here, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, MC. Now, on this very particular thing, I think we are going to take the advice of the speakers uh, who submitted here that there is support of local government reform that with conditions that the law has to be settled in a way that the local government gives if granted the autonomy of our democracy. Have you noticed who, who speaks to them? Who look up submissions on this? Yes, like the speakers submitted uh, to our governors and other critical stakeholders on this very important subject. But the position of our business is that we are in support of local government reforms. There will some amendments yet to be made. I think that is our common position. Those who support it, aah. Those who disagree, aah, we will argue. Now, move to the next item that has to do with the, for women, inclusion and equality.
Mr. Chairman.
So when you advise me to leave the party, you want to be a candidate.
This additional seat for women includes the dominant field Bill Number 140. A bill for an act to alter the provisions of the Constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria 1999 to provide additional seats for women in the national assembly and the state houses of assembly and related matters. This bill seeks to amend the constitutional sections 48, 49, 71, 77, 91, and 17. And the amendment it will provide, it will provide installation for both such opportunities and amendments to provide for one additional seat in the senate, a state plus X city. That is. For the last of representatives in the vote this one additional seat for states for 36 states of the Declaration plus X city. For the state houses of assembly proposes the amendment of section 91 for one additional seat based on the current history by Federal District that will give you unwelcome level seats. In the prayer I know so being late as it's like this in 90 section 91 I am bringing you our local government's actors of a nation and a different essence.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Well, this very silent power, this is now. Great Nigeria women. Let us advocate for female women. I will support this bill. The reason is that when you support this bill, you are supporting Nigeria to do for. Over time, over time, we've discovered that women in power are good at doing well. We're also aware of the saying that when you build a woman, you build a vision. And I'm not saying going by Nigerian women in the corridor of power, you are not disappointed of. So, we are going to take your people's, you can say I'm standing up for this bill. That goes for show the support, the love, and the gratitude of women. And I think that for today, contact my brother. Therefore, we must support you that we expect you to lead your case. But there are some at all the senators here, because when I get there, somebody confronts me, how come all of here men? I say, our country is here. So, thank you. So, you have your seat now. I'm going to hear from you, state by state. Because some of you will not speak, I don't have the time. So when we call for your representative from Igbo, she will have to give me one person in the one, in Limbo. So that at the end of the day, we not know that this is the common stand of South African women. But if you have one single leader that will speak for all of you, go and try. So when she comes for the, 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 the.
Mr. Chairman, the progress of this very commandment will drop people at the line of it so when your current presidential election will not be a steep, thank you.
But this, this has to represent the national who is also supporting this bill. Thank you.
My chair, the president. The greatest Nigerian women. The bestest and the bestest in the country of Nigeria women. Everybody who stands for this is in support of this bill. Do you think you will stand for for another investor who wants to follow as you see one, a member of the party? If I like whoever says about the position and if women want to have a state and that's easy. My question is, how do we not ask for freedom, how do we do? Which selection we make? Because this question we have to ask this question from the beginning. So we will learn something what we are going to do. But I, the last question is you want to, you want to be, in the future. How do you want to answer?
And thank you. Thank you, the chief head of the House of Commons. And women, by one end, you will have your bill, but every college of the House of Commons will surely influence us from our party's estimation. Great Nigerian women. Great Nigerian women. I rise to fully support this bill. And I also, while supporting it, also would like to answer part of the question that my colleague raised. Last year, when we were in Canada on a retreat on constitutional amendments, the issue of gender and women inclusion was raised. What we agreed first is that let us agree that it is justified that women must have a seat backstage. Then, we will sit down and derive the modernity on how women is the women that sitting. So, I will say that what we have to end today is to first of all agree that women must have a seat. When we all agree the issue of how to allocate it, we must find a way to do it. So, the same issue that I have answered your question, we will give women a seat too. Thank you. Great Nigerian women. Today is your day, because we are all your products. Now, MC, you can give the microphone to the chief leader to both raise their points. Thank you. Yes, the five years. The five years, the last year.
Great Nigerian women. Great Nigerian women. Today is our day. Thank you. Uh, the chairman of this so many people here are looking at us, so they should be happy. It's really spread out to the light here. I would like to just be very surprised to say that I am not myself. Certainly, I am not a person that I suspect. Certainly, I was not here. I recognize all and just this sentence this one for time. I recognize this part of the earth that I am setting up in my head. I recognize our own nation that they thought we could handle. They thought we could, they put us here. We call, we call. Also. For this, yes. Thank you.
But I'm not a big one, big one, I'm the.
On the young men who are in Nigeria and States. But this is the voice.
What do I want? How we do the body, how we do this, for the social, making that.
Our professions, professions, and young girls, who's potential, we bear attack. This is the right decision of the citizens. I aspire to present all the women who are in this conversation, for you Bruce, the BBC, the commission. Including Nigeria, of their protests, we learn a collective work out. We learn politics, the group, the relationship of women, my heart, the relationship of women, my heart. We just have to get the science and the research center, what's in it. I'm learning from you Bruce, we learn to have a safe location in the city. National experience devices, and like, yes, they are not twenty eight.
The people should.
I think, I think, I think, yes. We are ready, the national assembly for considering the exact situation, except as a single college. These are our political positions others. By the time we are, we learn the kind of, 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 yes. And I have a lot of things to say on the night, when the time of the job. This is the reflection, contest of the, it is the reflection of social, everybody. When the party learns, when it is Nigeria's city, we generate race and race. For children, for family, for the six children. We have not obtained, we select where the process, while the operation is still part of our silent life. How are you? The exact thing is what they have done. It is a great thing, and it is a very intelligent, to bring the world about that, about that great discussion, you know what? It is a tradition, in Nigeria, of social practices, in politics, and about the situation. It is a, which is about the, where that, Zulay, South America, has seen major.
Because he gets it from there.
It is a, with every little step, powers of the government, and shot out, not for lack of merit, they do so. It's time to have a new one. What are the mistakes? We are asking for the alteration of the constitution of the Republic of Nigeria. To create the South East for women in the basis, by having been, had been, all ready for mine. How are you? The South East for women is an international crisis, but the other way around. To ensure the inclusion of the very bottom, this will be a, will be a, will be a, it is a. To see a high risk, very, very. We are not asking for diversity, but those things that are happening there. We cannot always, constitution, we have always, it's such a presence that are happening there. We are asking for additional seats, so the men who still have all the ground, we are not making, we are looking at. So we are asking for, for special section 48, 49, 91, and others, in great additional seats in your states, in your cities. One seat we have on the federal seat in the states, one seat we have, and this is what we have, we have to say. All that is, I still have people in the house, when we finish pass, I like it, we do what I want. All that is, I still have people in the house, when we finish pass, I like it, we do what I want. All that is, for more than a century, and for three, and for six, three months. This is the vision of four, including the Lord, of five places, from overall, the world, the world, the world, the world. In the United States, trying to protect my citizens, for, see that, you see, this is, for how the, the, my, 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 for, my, my, is just unfair.
Thank you.